Good morning, everyone. Thank you for being here this beautiful Thursday morning. Today's date is June 12, 2025. This morning's public hearing, held by the Comedian Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs, is called to order. It is now 9:30 a.m. Some housekeeping matters before that I would briefly discuss so we can get to work right away. The first notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and the media outlets on June 5, 2025, with a second notice disseminated on June 10, 2025. These hearing notices were also made available on KOM, the Guam Legislature's website and our legislative calendar, and the government of Guam's public notice portal. Today, we will hear testimony on the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey D. Kosaka to serve as a member of the Guam Regional Transit Authority Board of Directors and Bill 10838-COR, author Senator William A. Parkinson, an act to add sections 10404.1 and to amend sections 10404 of Article 4, Chapter 10, Title 12, in relative to the authorizing Customs and Quarantine Agency to enter into a public-private partnership to screen all cargo entering Guam at its ports of entry. At this time, I would like to welcome my colleagues who are here joining us this morning. Of course, to my right, Senator Will Parkinson. Good morning, sir. To my left, my Senator Sean Gomatalta, and Senator Talatidegui. Thank you again, colleagues, for being here this morning. Before, again, we begin, I'd like to remind everyone in attendance of the Estatuwan Guam's General Rules of Conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for the record. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance or nature of today's agenda. Personal inferences to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying is not permitted. Pursuant to Section 1107 of the 38th Guam Legislative Standing Rules, a person may order the removal from a hearing of a committee or a subcommittee, any person who is not a member of the Estatuwan Guam and who fails to observe proper decorum. Any violation to this rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed with the hearing testimony, the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey D. Kosaka to serve as the Board Directors of the Guam Regional Transit Authority. Mr. Kosaka will be joining us via Zoom. There's anyone here today who would like to testify in regards to Mr. Kosaka's appointment, please feel free to step up to the table here and have a seat while we get Mr. Kosaka on Zoom. Okay? Thank you very much, Mr. Kosaka. Are we ready for Mr. Kosaka? Good morning, or good afternoon, wherever you're at, Mr. Kosaka. How are you doing this morning?
Good morning, Senator. My apologies. I'm currently in Vegas, visiting my son and his family. So, yes, here in Las Vegas.
No problem. You can go ahead and start your testimony. Go ahead.
Okay. Okay, before the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, and Federal and Foreign Affairs, my name is Jeffrey Duñez Kosaka. I live in the village of San Rita. I'm a veteran. I served the federal government for 25 years. I retired in the Guam Army National Guard of 21 years. And as you can see, my time has been dedicated to the service to our nation and our island. And now, I would like to give back to our community. Without further ado, I would like to go ahead and start my testimony. Chairperson, Senator Jesse Luan, honorable members of the committee and the people of Guam, thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today. I am honored to be nominated to serve on the board of the Guam Regional Transit Authority. I accept this nomination with humility and deep commitment to improving transportation for the benefit of all our island residents. A little background, throughout my military and federal civilian career, I have worked closely with underserved populations, including veterans, new farmers, and rural communities. My focus has been on improving access to essential services, whether through transportation, agriculture, or community support networks. I've seen firsthand how transportation limitations can create barriers to opportunity, and I believe that public transportation serves as a bridge connecting people to jobs, education, healthcare, and each other. My work coordinating mobile delivery service for produce, supporting veterans, transition to farming careers, and helping develop island-wide distribution solutions gives me a clear view of challenges and potential of Guam's transportation infrastructure. My goals and objectives. One, improve accessibility and equity across transit services. I am committed to ensure our transit system reaches all segments of the population, especially those with limited mobility, veterans, seniors, and those living in underserved areas. Accessibility is not only about fiscal infrastructure, it's about listening to the needs of the people and responding with real, practical solutions. Strengthen local and regional partnerships. Transportation doesn't operate in a vacuum. I would advocate for stronger collaboration between GRTA, village mayors, nonprofit businesses, and the community leaders to identify route needs, expand transit options, and integrate services with local programs. Promote economic opportunity through transit connectivity. For many small business owners, farmers, and job seekers, reliable transportation is the difference between success and struggle. I will work to ensure that transit routes and services are designed with economic development in mind, supporting access to markets, jobs, and services that sustain our island community. Support environmentally and sustainable transportation. I support efforts to modernize our fleet and infrastructure with sustainability in mind, including exploring electric buses, fuel-efficient vehicles, and transportation planning that respects our island land and environment. Ensure fiscal responsibility and operational transparency. As steward of public resources, I will support policies that promote accountability and performance-based decision-making. Transit services should be efficient, safe, and driven by measurable outcomes that serve the people of Guam. In closing, I believe the public service is about creating opportunity and removing barriers. As a GRTA board member, I will advocate for systems that work for everyone, especially those who are too often left out of conversation. I welcome this opportunity to serve, and I thank you for your trust and consideration. Si dos mase. I am happy to answer any of your questions. Respectfully, again, Jeffrey D. Kosaka.
Thank you, Mr. Kosaka. And again, we have five-minute rule here to include myself. Mr. Kosaka, again, thank you very much, again, for your service, your decorated career of the Army, and of course, your employment with NAVFAG, and your commitment, of course, not only to the nation but to our island. Just a few questions. Mr. Kosaka, you emphasized improving accessibility and equity in GRTA services. How do you propose to measure whether GRTA is reaching underserved populations, especially effectively, especially southern villages?
Okay. Well, starting with the southern villages, I believe the southern villages are one of the less accessibility for transportation. As you can see, to include infrastructure and other resources, the southern seems to get the end of the stick. As a board member, I would emphasize that from north to south, east to west, that we develop opportunities and transportation needs for island-wide, and most especially to our southern residents.
Also, what specific strategies do you envision to improve services, again, for veterans, seniors, individuals with disabilities? And how do you plan to include their voices in the decision-making processes?
Well, as you can see, within the board structure, board member structure of GRTA, you know, we've got a couple of village mayors, a few appointees from the government, and then from there, we appoint by law a member of the GRTA, individual that uses the transportation, and also a senior citizen member of our community. I will work closely with the GRTA management and the board to provide accessibility, most especially for, again, those that are underserved. And as you can see, in our island, we have a lot of individuals with disabilities. As far as veterans, we would improve services as well. I do know that veteran community program, I mean, I'm sorry, organizations have started already some transportation needs for our veterans themselves, including coming from the CIBAC themselves. So again, I would advocate more for those with disabilities and veterans and the entire community of Guam.
Okay. You also mentioned stronger collaboration between village mayors, nonprofit organizations, and businesses. What mechanisms would you recommend to GRTA to adopt to formalize or deepen these partnerships? And have you identified potential community partners at this point?
Again, example, the veterans' services for transportation. CIBAC provides a van. There's other organizations that provides van and services for transporting veterans to their appointments and to include to and from. Now, village mayors, I believe, have, are the key, have and are the key members of our community that has direct access to their constituents and members of our community that use the GRTA services. I would recommend that we get together in a form of collaboration through a public-private partnership with, you know, small businesses and all those in the transportation realm, and collaborate and to make our island transportation more effective and be able to support the needs of the entire community of Guam.
Okay. Yeah, you've worked with farmers and small businesses as well. What role do you think GRTA can play in economic development? And likewise, are the transit models from other island communities, what other models from other island communities you believe Guam should consider?
Well, transportation comes in all forms. I've recently applied, for example, a grant and requires transportation to assist farmers in transporting their goods to and from their farm and into the community, and to also include, it will service the elders as far as driving to their homes and anywhere around the island. You know, it's ironic that I'm here in Vegas, and the bus transportation here is very critical for a lot of these folks. I see it, north to south, east to west, you know, there's shelters, there's buses that constantly, you know, travel the streets to pick up and drop off. You know, I see them dropping off employees, normal commuters, and most especially the disabled and the underserved community.
Would you support pilot or pilot programs that connect transit hubs to commercial zones, farmers' markets, job training centers? And how would you evaluate that success?
Well, again, transportation is the key to moving from point A to point B. I myself not only have a personal vehicle for normal day-to-day operations and stuff, but however, now in the farming industry, you know, there's a little difference on transporting. So, you know, you would have to haul heavier stuffs and pull equipments and things like that. Now, I support the GRTA program to transport the entire island population who utilizes these services, because in order to get point A to point B, they would require transportation, whether it be to the, you know, go to the grocery store, or, you know, to the employment and home, medical services, and whatnot.
Okay, Mr. Kosaka, in the past, GRTA has faced criticisms regarding accountability. What tools or policies would you advocate to improve transparency in budgeting, procurement, and service performance?
Well, first of all, at this point, I believe the last board meeting I saw was December of 2021, and as you can see, it's been a challenge for GRTA to get some board members in to continue the process. I believe that working along with the GRTA management and board, we can help facilitate and steer Guam into a better direction in what it was before. I believe that having transportation up and running with good leadership and management, good board of directors, would help steer our island into the future in better transportation for the island of Guam, for all those that require transportation.
Okay. My last question again, how will you define performance-based decision-making in the transit context? And what metrics do you believe GRTA should be using to determine that success?
Well, again, in order for GRTA to operate as an autonomous agency, we would have to ensure that accountability of funds received from, i.e., the legislature and all the services that we provide through the transportation services that be accounted for and be transparent with our island leadership. And transparency is the key to ensuring the success of GRTA.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Kosaka. Senator Parkinson?
I don't really have any questions for this gentleman. I'm very familiar with Mr. Kosaka. I know him to be a man of very good character and very good work ethic, and I believe that he would be a good fit to help with GRTA. And so I would definitely support Mr. Kosaka, and thank you for stepping up into this service.
You're welcome. Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Senator Gomatalta?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good evening to you, Mr. Kosaka. Serving, you could be retired. It's, so kudos to you. I only have a few questions, but if I can ask, when you think of two priorities that you want to accomplish at the GRTA, can you please share what those two are for you? If you're confirmed.
Well, there's a lot of priorities, but I think the most critical part of this process is getting the board going, and hopefully that if I get confirmed, and the will of the rest of the others, that we move along with the new ideas, with the present acting GRTA leadership, so we can start the process. You know, I've just recently learned that, you know, it's an autonomous agency, and that's going to require staffing, of course, budget, staffing, and good leaders and good employees to operate the transit. And I believe the leadership on board, to include the board members that are being selected, have the acumen and the knowledge to move GRTA into the future with better transportation and transparency.
Thank you so much.
Number two is, yeah, number two, you're welcome. Number two is, priorities, so again, will go to the people with disabilities, and most especially those that require transportation services to and from their home of record, i.e. through the mayor's office, or, you know, example, San Rita store, wherever the pickup and drop-off points are. I see the transportation every day, and it's to navigate that, it has to be timing, there has to be consistency, and, you know, a 24-hour operation in order for people to be able to travel to and from work and provide for themselves and their family.
Hey, thank you so much. I think you mentioned two good things, I mean, and I heard today, was the first one was that, once the board gets constituted, really is to help drive the agency, which is autonomous, which means, as you know, in these current fiscal times, they're very challenging. When you're autonomous, there's a lot more reliance on trying to find funds outside of what would be perhaps general fund funds. And it's not on you, because I know you're just trying to get in, and it's not on the current management, because they just got in. But I will say this, for, you know, since 2009, 16 years, the people of Guam have looked to GRTA and to help provide an important service to 12,000 people. If it's not working, and you get in there and you just feel maybe this ain't it, the funding ain't going to happen, do we abolish it? Can I ask you that?
Well, first off, I can't really speak for prior leadership, but I do know that the current manager, Mr. Tim Ogun, has the experience and knowledge to move GRTA forward. Him having the whelmo of the transportation field in his Air Force and military career, I think he's got a lot of experience and new ideas and the knowledge to move GRTA forward. To abolish GRTA, if funding and all those stuff are not available, I think it's not something that I will accept, because, you know, like the service, never accept defeat. There are other, you know, if there's a will, there's a way, and if there's opportunities of finding funding resources elsewhere, or just being creative with how we provide the transportation and do the services, I believe partnerships with the island community would help facilitate and move GRTA, because like a barber, you know, they need people with long hair to, you know, do their barber shop. I mean, we have a lot of car dealerships, we have a lot of car maintenance facilities, you know, we've got the DPR, we've got the federal side. I think collaboratively, we can work together to make this thing continue to strive and be better for Guam.
Well, thank you so much, and I was trying to elicit a response that I really did expect, because I think at times, we take it for granted. I have a car, many other people don't. But it's also important that if we are going to provide this critical public service, if that's what our intention is, then we need to make sure that everyone is fully aware. I mean, I was at the judiciary, I saw that, you know, the support that it could provide to many of its clients, and I, again, I agree with you, that if there's a will, there's got to be a way. I support your nomination, Mr. Kosaka, and thank you again for taking the time this evening in Las Vegas. Appreciate you.
You're welcome. Thank you, Senator Gomatalta. I'd like to welcome also the vice chair of the committee, of course, Senator Chris Duñez, and also Senator Chris Bernard. Thank you for being with us this morning. Senator Talatidegui?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues, also, good morning to those who are listening, the listening audience, as well as the man of the hour, Mr. Kosaka. Thank you so much for joining us here today, no matter where you are. Tells me now that you're going with the times, the change of times, and being able to utilize technology to our advantage, and I hope that that's a sign when it comes to the website. I've always been an individual person who relies on information through the website. And, you know, looking through it, I've noticed the meetings, the last thing that was on the website for a meeting was in 2022. Is that your recollection of your research of Guam Mass Transit's last meeting they had?
Well, from what I recollect, it's the last meeting I see was in December 14, 2021, that's on the website. However, I do know that the GRTA management team are constantly updating the systems with information, because that is key. You know, I was a signal system support specialist in the Army and communications, and I tell you, without those slides being updated, without the websites being updated, you know, our leadership cannot fight the battlefield without that current information. And likewise, in the civilian world, without all that information, you know, agencies across the board, people that utilize the website must be able to read current events and, you know, not only GRTA, but I've, you know, I visit a lot of websites, and I tell you, every website that has, that deals with social media, or internet, or commo, or anything like that, requires good IT person to make that happen, because, you know, navigating a computer system and the internet, Microsoft, or Word, or all that kind of stuff, takes a lot of skill sets, and the willing to provide the information to the public. And in today's world after COVID, I think the internet has worked well. As you can see, this Zoom meeting today, you know, just because we're off island doesn't mean that we cannot attend. And I'd like to thank Senator Luan's office for providing the Zoom and not having to reschedule the public hearing, because time is of essence in every schedules that we do.
Well, thank you for that answer, and thank you for your know-how of using technology and being able to, you know, understand the importance of it, especially when it comes to transparency. And, you know, that comes along with other things. You know, we utilize technology for advantage, but at the same but at the same time, we also need it to, you know, to protect us because it can easily get in the wrong hands and misinformation is brought up. So that being said, I mean, you're a board member. So you have the ability and according to your bylaws and rules and regulations that you can create as a board member that you can actually, you know, be a champion on the board to ensure that the website is up. Transparency is key. Information and data is always processed through on a, you know, if not a daily basis, on a weekly basis. And to update your, I think that I hope that's what you're going to do, update the website because you know how important it is. And right now, even though they do have some information saying that there was a scam going through, that's just one thing. But what about explaining why the last board member, board meeting here was in September 13, 2022? You know, things like that need to be explained. Your appointment, do you know if you're going to be able to make quorum or are you still looking at the other?
Well, I asked that question and I believe there's a fourth member. It's going to take four members to make a quorum. And once we get that four going, again, we're gonna, the appointments of the other individuals would be submitted by the management and but most importantly, the first four that we get confirmed is, you know, we need that. We need to move G R T A forward with the, you know, recent activity that happened within G R T A, you know, it's I watched it from the outside and I think now that we have a strong management team in there to include the board members that we're bringing in, you know, you had June Bloss, you know, your Dale Alvarez Jr., and I believe there's a Mr. Cruz that they're working on. And of course, myself with over 25-plus years with the federal transportation site, you know, from from being the mechanic to the inspector to the bus operator, bus scheduling, you know, and then into the acquisitions of vehicles, training, you know, flight line up in Anderson Air Force Base. You know, I was responsible for training, you know, 100-plus active duty and civilian employees to ensure that they operate safely in the airfield and outside with the individual respective trades, you know, i.e. electrical, bucket trucks, you know, heavy equipments, backhoe, dump trucks. I mean, it's very critical and that goes as well to G R T A.
Thank you so much for that. You know, as a board member too, you have the ability to appoint a director, executive director to the Guam Regional Transit Authority. Is there anything in your rules and regs that you do for an evaluation of the director? Is that done on a yearly basis, on a monthly basis? Are you familiar with that?
Well, I've been reading into the the Guam code annotated, and I do know that the board is required to to vote and approve for a G R T A manager. And that is critical because, like I said earlier, I think the individual that's that's currently on board, it's something that we want to work to get moving along and I believe that this individual, Mr. Tim Uggan, has the acumen, has the experience, has the background and has the drive to move G R T A forward. And without a stable management team, it's like any other business, you know, there's a lot of risk and if there's no continuity, you know, business don't work well like that, you know, you got to have strong leadership and and strong supportive board members that will be able to work collaboratively with the with management and the public in general to get G T R moving.
And what about evaluation? Do you have the authority to evaluate the director on a yearly or bi-yearly basis?
I don't, I don't have the information on the yearly or annual, but I do believe that the board of directors would would have that opportunity to evaluate leadership. And I do, I do know that once a manager is we vote and approve, I believe goes for five years. So if I haven't come across the requirements yet, if it's a, if it's a bi-annual, annual, we would ensure that that these evaluations are done so that the performances of the current manager are in line with the policies and procedures. And if not, you know, those things would be addressed.
Thank you for that. And if there's a conflict of interest, you have no problem, you know, divulging that and stepping aside?
I don't have a problem when there's conflict of interest.
Okay. Well, it's obvious you are very, I think you're very well qualified, looking at your employment history. Of course, being a military man, I know you're very strict for rules and regulations and I greatly appreciate that. But there is something on your your application here folder, and I just wanted to clear up here. It says under education, high school, community college, dates of attendance was 1988 to 1990. And then it says type of degree, high school diploma. But then it said the year earned was 1999. Is that a typographical error or?
No, it's not a typical, typical error. You know, like everyone, most people have challenges. Stand back. Growing up in life, so, you know, I made some wrong decisions in the past. You know, if I'm not finishing school, however, through time and employment, I decided to, after the riff in 2000 with the P W C, I decided to go back and get my G E D. And I joined the service.
I think.
As you can see, yeah, it took, it's about like a nine, 10-year span difference. However, you know, I'm a retired service member now, so education is, you know, never too late.
I mean, thank you so much for that. You're definitely an inspiration to those individuals think that it's never too late, you know, to fulfill obligations of, you know, the education. And then you've actually over succeeded with all these accolades and everything that you've not only achieved in your life, that's very impressive, but what you've given back to to the community. I noticed you were part of Barrow and greatly appreciate your community service to that. And that means, again, you're contributing again to your community by serving on this board because it's not easy. It takes a lot of your personal time and definitely I feel comfortable that you're going to be serving on this board. And I always tell everybody that my door is wide open. And if there's anything I can do to assist you or if you find something that's giving you hardship while sitting on the board, please tell it to Telov. Sidozmasi.
Thank you, Senator Tydewi. For my colleagues' information as well, we've been, our office has been working closely with, of course, Director Uggan and his team at G R T A to try to get them fully boarded. I know that Mr. John Cruz's appointment packet has been submitted. However, we have not gotten that transmittal. And so we were trying to try to get him, you know, in this public here, I mean, this confirmation hearing. So as soon as we get that, we'll schedule that. But thank you again, Mr. Uggan, for, again, working closely to try to get you fully boarded and not have the years of gap between meetings. I understand what's going on. Thank you very much. But Senator and my vice chair, of course, Senator Chris Duñez.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chairman, and sidozmasi locally to Mr. Jeffrey Kosaka for accepting the governor's nomination and the willingness to serve. You know, Mr. Kosaka, when I look through the progression of your employment history, starting with the U S Naval Public Works Center, automotive technician, and then you became the automotive technician lead with Raytheon. And then moving on, U S Naval Forces, you were a police officer. And then finally, transportation management analyst for the 36 Civil Engineers Squadron. That to me really is a fully well-rounded set of qualifications for this nomination, and I want to thank the governor for nominating you. When you look at your understanding of security and safety, when you look at vehicle maintenance, fleet maintenance, and then, of course, being in the management level, there's no question you have my support for your nomination. I wanted to mention something to you, particularly since it looks as though you've done a lot of analysis, systematic systemic analysis in your previous, you know, jobs and duties. I think that one thing that I hear oftentimes with regard to the current G R T A in terms of timeliness and also efficiency is normally in a lot of, of course, larger jurisdictions, you have a kind of main routes that really are easy to keep on time when you have transportation that's running a main route. And then, of course, you divert out interior, like the large villages like Jigo, Dedido, perhaps even down in the Tuamon area, we could get something going. Even maybe we might have expansion to tourists and the thing, we know we have trolleys and things. But one of the things is timeliness and reliability. If people are going to use this transportation from large areas like the north, getting in, they don't necessarily have to be dropped off at the door, but to the village of or the areas where, you know, a lot of the workforce are working. You know, would you look at, and I'm sure I see Tim Uggan nodding, he said the manager probably that's already there. But do you see that as something the board would really concentrate on in terms of, you know, ensuring maybe more efficiency by dividing up the grid as opposed to transporting one, two, three people at a time kind of on a door-to-door service? We know that needs to happen, particularly to persons with needs. I know that, you know, G R T A really does serve a needy population that that relies on the transportation. But to try to grow the usage, do you see that as a, you know, as something that you would work on as a board member?
You know, Tim Uggan has a vision and I fully support his plans and ideas to move G R T A to the next level. There's a lot of experience that he has that can relate to the question you've asked and and the services provided with G R T A at this point would only get better moving forward. I can assure you that with his management, leadership and experience and the vision would bring G T A, G R T A to the next level. Just like when he was at the Veterans Affairs Office, you know, he had a vision down there to get it going. And if you see it, you know, with the continued leadership of Mr. Son Augustine, we got a chapel that's done. We got, you know, an admin building, we got the maintenance, you know, equipment purchases, you know, that's needed for that area. That was, that is the best I've seen, the veteran cemetery and its services for us veterans. Can you imagine what he would do for G R T A? And I can, and I already see it, even my discussions with him, I think just, just the man he is and the background that he has and the experience and the drive, we would have no questions but progress to move G R T A forward. And I, and I'm willing and able to be there with the board to help move G R T A forward.
Thank you, Mr. Kosaka. And I, like I said, Tim was nodding, so I'm sure there's a master plan that they have put together that envisions that. Just wanted to go over the key point that I've heard from time to time on observations of, you know, trying to expand opportunities. I certainly appreciate your answer and I certainly appreciate your willingness to serve. And like I said, in my opinion, on the operations side, there's no question, Tim, you're going to acquire a very experienced individual who will help guide things going forward. So with that, I don't have any other questions. Congratulations, Mr. Kosaka. I think you're going to do well. And I certainly look forward to your nomination hitting the floor and voting in favor of you. Sidozmasi, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice. Senator Barnett.
Sidozmasia, Mr. Chairman, and sidoz to the people of Guam. And I just also want to say good luck to the Guam Senior Little League All-Stars as at this moment, as we sit in this hearing room, they're playing the C N M I in the Senior Little League Asia-Pacific Tournament. So I'm not saying I'd rather be there, but I did want to come and congratulate Mr. Kosaka on his leveling up of public service. And, you know, I have a lot of fond memories of the well, back then it was called Guam Mass Transit, right? And so I was raised by a single mother and she would actually ride the transit to get to work and then to come home. So, you know, like a lot of things that our government has done before, I kind of have this idea in my head that we did it pretty good back in the day, and so I'm yearning to see that that kind of return. And I know you guys have had your share of legal troubles, so I'm very eager to help get you fully boarded. And, Mr. Kosaka, I know you're a hard worker. I follow you on the social media. I see you're always, you know, working in the farm, posting the cow. So I hope you bring that same work ethic to your service as a board member. And I would just ask that you, you know, never forget where you came from and don't forget the little people. You know, I've had the privilege really of meeting with a lot of concerned constituents who had issues with G R T A, whether it's on the paratransit side or just the consistency of the service. So anything we can do here in the legislature, I'm willing to support it. I don't think this is an entity we need to abolish. I think that as, you know, we, we get fully boarded and we have an actual management team. I think we're going to start seeing that progress because I know there's a lot of discussion about the E V buses that you're supposed to get for the for the inventory. So I really see, I'm hopeful that we'll see a return to the glory days, if you will. There was a saying back in the day, I don't know if you guys remember, winners ride the bus, right? Yeah, so if you could get a, maybe bring that one back. But again, Mr. Kosaka, thank you for your willingness to serve. And, you know, don't ever be ashamed. A lot of us go through challenges in life and, you know, the fact that you went back and you got your G E D, I think that's something to be proud of. And I say that as a fellow G E D holder, Mr. Kosaka. So thank you again for your testimony. I was a little bit late to the hearing, but I was watching at the office and I was very appreciative that you consistently said that you're going to bring accountability and transparency to your service as a member of the G R T A board. So, ndoklunasidosmasi, Mr. Kosaka. And thank you, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Now we'll get to the panel and again, I wanted to make sure that we got Mr. Kosaka because he's via Zoom and I think he's in Las Vegas. And I want to make sure that we get his testimony and questions in, in case we lose the connection. So now we'll go with to the panel. We have, of course, we have Mr. Tim Uggan, Mr. Mike Johnson and Mr. Chris Flores. And we'll go ahead and start, I guess we'll start from, we'll start, yeah, we'll start from the left. Okay, Mr. Flores, go ahead.
Thank you.
Please identify yourself and then.
Thank you. My name is Christopher Camacho Flores and I'm a voter-at-large. And I'd like to thank you, Chair, for having this hearing for the nomination of, on confirmation for Jeffrey Duñez Kosaka. I've known Jeffrey for quite some time. We've worked together in a lot of logistics area. I know that him being in the military as I as well and Tim, we know a thing or two about moving people and equipment from point A to point B in a varied of ways, either through air, land or sea, you name it, we know what to do. Going to the mass transit here on Guam, it's a very, very challenging issue. There is no role model to follow because Guam is unique. I remember growing up in the 70s, we used to hitchhike with my cousins from Baragada down to Agania. And then from Magana, we go around to all the shopping places and all the government. And then from Agania, we'd go around to all the shopping places and all the government agencies and, you know, we just hang out and then we'd hitchhike back. Back in those days, everybody knew everybody. And sit with my cousins that were living elsewhere, they'd hitchhike and we'd meet up at Epa Beach or whatever because we didn't have cars, there was no transportation. Nowadays, you look at houses throughout Guam, there's not one house that you'll find with one vehicle in that house. Okay, I would say even three is probably the average of vehicles in every household. And that includes everybody. I'm not saying just Chamoros, I'm talking even the Americanisians, Filipinos, everybody. So on Guam, mass transportation is going to be a challenge, however you look at it. What we need to focus on, and I'm glad that Jeff kept repeating it, and I know Tim will do so as well, is we really need to target it. So instead of calling this the Guam Rapid Transit Authority, because there's nothing rapid on Guam, I would try and modify it to the Guam Targeted Transit Authority. And let's target the people that really need it, that really need the service. And that is the underserved, which is, you know, the people that can't afford to buy a car, the folks that are disabled and don't have the funds to buy the vehicle that they can, you know, put their wheelchair in there and provide the services. And then, and also the veterans that, you know, really can't afford a vehicle, because there are a lot of struggling veterans here on Guam in as far as finding employment and jobs and what have you. So I would say, and I'm glad that he mentioned the mayors, you know, it's tough, I see there's several GR TA transit pickup points and there were glass and now I think a lot of them are moving into plexiglass because they were being vandalized. You know, people are breaking the glasses, et cetera, whatever. And it's just tough to build all these bus stops along the way because really, and like you mentioned, Senator, it's tough to try and go and have a route and say, you know, you'll be there at a certain time and then you'll be at the next location at a certain time. I've traveled a lot. My first news station was Germany. If that train said eight seventeen AM and you're not on the track three, that train is gone. And it took us a while, us Chamoros traveling, that, you know, hey, if it says eight seventeen, you better be there at eight seventeen because that train is there and gone at eight eighteen. Hawaii, the same thing. You know, you get on the Wiki Wiki bus and if it says they're eight twenty, it'll be there. And it goes on. And I get off Honolulu Airport, I can catch a Wiki Wiki bus to Hickam Air Force Base, straight to the terminal there to catch a Mac flight out. Or they drop me off at the lodging facility to get quarters. So I think here on Guam, it's, we have a big challenge. We need to target our customers. And a lot of Chamoros, I'll tell you, I'm speaking for Chamoros, we don't like to ride buses. I mean, you know, when you get seen riding a bus, your friends, you cannot afford a car, you know, what happened to your car or what happened? That won't happen. I would rather call my cousin, whoever in the family, hey, come pick me up, I need a ride. I'm not going to go and call that GR TA and say, hey, I need a bus ride or whatever. So it's very challenging. I know that Mr. Uggan will be up to the task and I just hope that, you know, they really find a way to provide the services that our people really need here on Guam. And that will conclude my testimony. Thank you for the time and giving me the opportunity to say my two cents worth. And I just want to, in closing, I just want to say, congratulations to 38th Guam Legislature. I've never seen a people's house that is in order, has decorum, respect is restored. And it's really a different feeling coming here now and feeling like, you know, you're really part of the process and not coming here and be bantered or, you know, be ridiculed of your testimony or whatever. And you guys are open to hearing what we have to say. Thank you and Sidoos Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Flores. Director Uggan.
Hafide. Good morning. Buenas tardes. Todo amso. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, the committee as a whole on transportation. Thank you for allowing me to speak today on behalf in my support for Mr. Jeffrey Duñez Kosaka. I have a targeted summation of my support for him and some of the reasons why I'm also here and in place and hopefully soon to be confirmed as the permanent CEO and executive manager.
Mr. Director, can you again identify yourself so we put it on the record, okay? Please, thank you.
My name is Pierre Tim Uggan. I am the interim CEO/Executive Manager for Guam Regional Transit Authority. Thank you very much. I'm registered? Okay. As I was saying, what I'm going to cover here is not only the accolades of Mr. Jeffrey Duñez Kosaka to be a board member of Guam Regional Transit Authority, but also some of the reasons why him, the other board members and myself is a part of this vision. And I will, if I may, at the end of my support speech, I'd like to cover a few things that might answer some of your questions that might follow my testimony here in support of Mr. Kosaka. So I come before you in full support of Mr. Jeffrey Kosaka's nomination to the board of Guam Regional Transit Authority. Mr. Kosaka has lived experience, the discipline, and most importantly, the heart for public service. He understands the barriers of our people faced every day and brings practical, hands-on insight from years of service to understand the communities on Guam. I strongly support the nomination of Mr. Jeffrey Duñez Kosaka to the GR TA Board of Directors. Mr. Kosaka brings real-world experience and a service-minded heart, having worked directly with veterans, farmers and rural communities across Guam. His military and federal civilian background aligns with the values of discipline, accountability and the commitment. Quality is essential for GR TA's transformation. He understands and lived experience of underserved populations and has spent several years addressing issues of access, mobility and community connection. Mr. Kosaka's work in mobile delivery services and rural logistics gives him unique insight into how transportation and distribution intersect. An asset to GR TA as we expand into Marianas ferry services, electric vehicles and regional express services. His approach to equity is not theoretical, it's practical. People first and rooted in solutions that reflect community need. He shares our vision that public transit is not just infrastructure, it's a bridge to opportunity. As we continue to build GR TA into a model agency, one focused on autonomy, innovation and sustainability, Mr. Kosaka will be a strong, steady voice who understands the why, not just the what. I believe in his addition will strengthen our leadership team and help carry forward the mission we've set into motion. I respectfully ask this committee, Mr. Chairman, to confirm his appointment so we can continue the work of transforming public transportation for the people of Guam. Thank you and Sidoos Massey, but I would like to cover some of that vision, so maybe there, if I may.
Sure.
So I know there were some questions earlier regarding efficiency, reliability, in-depth reach to underserved and disabled, and expansion of routes to economic areas and underserved. We currently are, I reestablish internally the infrastructure and place the foundation within the agency physically, meaning that I've already wrote out our master plan to 2050 on the roadmap to bigger, better and more available reliable transportation needs for the people of Guam and the northern Marianas. That being said, we are in the process, actually, we have 23 buses and vans that are in the procurement phase, actually sitting at the AG's office for like 20 minutes. So right after that, the goal is to get to 60. And this will address in-depth into the village. It will also create us to have a dedicated loop for the tourists that will hit all the major shopping centers and key points for tourism to help boost our tourism. We also have, as part of the plan, a, how do they put it? I met with Yogi and some of the other higher. So we have an educational loop also. And you're probably saying, okay, we've got a loop for this, we've got a loop for that. Tim wants to get deeper into the village with the 60 buses. And in order for me to do that, for everybody to get on time and have reliable service, we have a express service. We are building four transfer terminals, one in the north, one in the central, two in the south, one in Agua Sanarita, one in Pago Bay, Joya, to ensure that we are on time, so that we can get deeper into the village, get the people to the hub, right? Get them to their destination, whether it's school, work, medical, veterans or just senior citizens that want to go watch a movie. This is what we're planning. This is what's in motion. This is what we're doing today. And with people like Mr. Jeff Kosaka as part of our board, he will help us move forward. And I'm asking the support of this committee and Mr. Chairman and Mr. Vice Chairman, please give us your support. Sidoos Massey.
Thank you, Mr. Uggan. And you have our full support, absolutely. But one question I'm going to ask, Mr. Uggan, and we keep in close contact as to what's going on with all these plans that you have, and we've worked also with your federal counterparts, but in your capacity as well, have you heard anything in regards to maybe funding cuts and things of that nature? Because that's one of the things that, you know, we can move, I mean, I love your plans, but, you know, if those are sidelined because of budget cuts, have you heard anything to date?
Actually, we communicate regularly with Federal Transit Authority. And actually, we recently had a meeting this morning regarding one of our pilot programs that addresses underserved areas, right? So we're in motion right now in partnership with Yogi, who will be our data collection service, right, to justify expanding the route. This will be another dedicated program outside of our current plans. And to answer the million-dollar question, which is actually $34 million of federal monies that are, that we are currently awarded, they have confirmed with us, and I can send you some communication regarding that, that our funds that have been awarded will not be retracted, will not be given back, and they reassured us that. So when I say that these are the things that we are doing, I'm only saying it because I know they're funded. I'm not going to talk about things that we can't do because we don't have the money, right? The only thing is I need the support from this entity to maintain, if not increase, our general fund money to help me have that additional flexibility to hire the employees that we need to accommodate and be a part of driving all the assets that we're going to bring in, mainly our buses, our bus system that we're going to have, the ferry service that's on the future, but also the terminals. See, at these terminals, we will have service there. We will have an office there to issue passes for people that don't have or maybe answer any questions, to provide guidance on routing and also to radio in and keep in communication with headquarters on the timeliness of our service. So yes, we are not guaranteed, but we have been reassured that the monies that we have will not be given back or taken back. And that is what I base my plan on.
How many employees do you have now?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two? Of the fifty-two, are they classified LTA's or?
We, if I may, I really love answering this question because since 2009, when they enacted this agency, nobody has put the infrastructure in there to provide the services that the people of Guam actually need. So I am doing that now. And to answer your question, 15 employees out of the 52 are classified, 15 or 17. But we are in the process. And as soon as we are able to become autonomous, that process will be faster. Okay? That's one of my priorities. Because all of this stiff-arming and bureaucracy needs to stop and I just need to do my job, right? I want to get this thing done. I want to provide the service that the people of Guam have been suffering and deserve to get this island moving. Transportation is one of the critical pillars for survivability. If nobody knew that outside of this room, it's one of the pillars of critical infrastructure. How are we not addressing this accordingly? It's critical. Thus the word. So, did I answer your question?
Mr. Chair.
I'm sorry.
Pardon me, Mr. Chair.
I'm just excited.
I beg your pardon, Mr. Chair. Could we ask that you provide the staffing pattern online? Because your website only has a staffing pattern since 2021. There has nothing been updated on your website. So I appreciate if you can put that on the website so we can review it, okay?
I appreciate that, Telo. And the reason why it's 2021, because it's the same staffing pattern. I haven't hired anybody.
Yeah, but it's also unreadable because if you go online and try to look at it, it's all blurry. So I appreciate it if you can update that.
Yes, we'll address that with Guam Web.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may, you know, request for that? Okay, thank you.
We'll do that. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, we'll talk to Guam Web's as soon as we get out of here.
I appreciate that, yeah.
If I have to visit them personally, I will.
Yeah. And likewise, because we spoke about this in previous meetings in regards to that, but not only that, but also the, because you mentioned tourism as well. And I know that GBB and GHRA would like to meet as well in regards to some of the challenges they have that maybe you'll be able to augment with what they currently have at this point.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We actually had a couple of meetings with them.
With, yeah, with Mayor Rhodes, yes, yes.
It's great to be a part of something that everybody's on the same wavelength and wants the same goal. So all three entities, GR TA, GHRA and GBB, we are singing the same song, we're on the same sheet of paper. We all want the same thing for the people of Guam and tourism and the economics of our island, and we are working in sync, yes.
And that's great because you fall under, you know, again, one chairmanship. So that's great. Thank you very much. Mr. Johnson.
I should have went first. Mike Johnson, I'm the ADA Paratransit Coordinator with Guam Regional Transit Authority. And honestly, I support the nomination of Mr. Kosaka. I'll be honest, that's pretty much all I have to say.
Yeah, thank you very much. College, have any questions for the panel here? Senator Parkinson? No? Vice?
No.
Senator Gomitado? Senator Barnett? Senator Tagui?
Just to make sure that website is up to date, you know, and I expect it by today, okay? And readable, readable, thank you, that's all.
Yes, it will be done today, for sure.
Yes. Can we bring Mr. Kosaka back on? Is he still on with us?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Mr. Kosaka, thank you very much. I appreciate you being with us this morning and also the panel for their testimonies this morning. Thank you again. And we look forward to, again, putting this committee report together and getting this on to the July, right? July? July session, Mr. Kosaka. Thank you very much for that. And we'll be awaiting, if you guys can push, of course, the packet to be transmitted to us, we'll try to get it on as soon as possible, try to get Mr. John Cruz's...
Yeah, I'll mention that to him once I catch up to him.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And this concludes, of course, the confirmation hearing for the appointment of Mr. Jeffrey Kosaka to serve as the member of the Board of Director of the Guam Regional Transfer Authority. At this time, we want to take just one minute break so we can, again, switch out and start our public hearing on Bill 108-38COR. We'll be right back. We'll be right back. Okay, we are back from recess. At this time, the committee is hearing testimony on Bill one zero eight dash thirty-eight. Before I turn it over to the author, I have a few um comments on the bill. And actually, this is Bill, again, one zero eight dash thirty-eight COR and Act to amend section one zero four zero four and to add section one zero four zero four point one of Article Four, Chapter Ten, Title Twelve, and relative to the authorizing Customs and Quarantine Agency to enter into a public-private partnership to screen all cargo entering Guam uh at its ports of entry. Again, before I turn it over to the author, I just want a few uh comments on on the on the bill. Again, um. Bill one uh zero eight thirty-eight, in its title, states that it allows for Guam Customs and Quarantine to enter into a public-private partnership to screen all cargo that enters Guam at its ports of entry. Given those words, uh, given the drugs you see on our island, uh, the rapid use of drugs on our island, and also given the reported leakages of taxes, specifically used taxes, as highlighted in many audits uh from the OPA, I support the bill wholeheartedly. Then, when I read the actual bill, what the bill does uh is it takes the section of law for the Port Authority of Guam where um they are allowed to enter into a public-private partnerships, and it adds customs to it. Here is my issues with the bill. Uh, here's where it lays, right? I had my office uh reach out to, of course, the folks from CQA, who shares the same sentiments and questions. First of all, based on audits, the leakages of used taxes happen at the airport and at the post office. This bill is one hundred percent silent about that. Again, it only amends the section of code relative to the seaport. It does not define screen. Does screening mean inspecting paperwork, or does it mean actually going into the containers, into air freight boxes, or your mail, or opening them? Definitions on screenings are absent in this bill. Furthermore, by having a private entity come in and search people's documents, again, these are confidential tax declarations that authority, that authority needs to be delegated. Similarly, at the um, if we are going to go through a private citizen's goods, if that is what we are doing, no language authorizing that delegation of law enforcement powers is in this bill. Based on these concerns, I support fighting uh drugs, of course, I support collecting taxes that are already in our books. And as we know from the last session, I support public-private partnerships, and hopefully that those bills will be signed uh this week or sometime soon, pretty much, of course. But while I like the title of the bill, I hope that to hear more from, of course, our first line of defense and how this would work in in reality. And once we get clarity and working with the author, uh, I am sure that we will be having uh markup hearings or depending on how much uh needs to be added uh to it currently. Um, you know, I look forward to the hearing today and working with my colleagues and the the committee um during markup. But now I'll um turn it over to the bill's author, um Senator Parkinson, please.
Mr. Chair, distinguished colleagues, members of the public. I come to speak in strong support of Bill number one oh eight dash thirty-eight, which authorizes our Customs and Quarantine Agency to enter a public-private private partnership to screen all cargo entering Guam at our ports of entry. This measure addresses multiple urgent problems facing Guam and offers a practical, cost-effective solution grounded in real data and successful examples. Currently, Guam's ports see a staggering volume of incoming cargo, far more than our custom officers can physically inspect. In fact, Guam Customs acknowledges that the vast majority of containers arriving at our seaport are not screened for illicit imports. Every day, hundreds of cargo containers enter our shores containing goods, food, and supplies crucial to island life. Yet only a tiny fraction of these containers are even opened or x-rayed. Law enforcement officials report that the daily flood of mail, fright, and equipment far exceeds available manpower. In practical terms, this means that the Port Authority of Guam is operating essentially on the honor system. We trust ninety to ninety-five percent of incoming cargo without verification and only randomly sample a few containers due to limited personnel and lack of technology. This needle-in-a-haystack approach is no longer tenable. Our own forensic and customs reports made clear that unchecked cargo is the primary route for methamphetamine and other contraband entering Guam. Attorney General Moreland has noted the amount of methamphetamine in our villages, schools, and prisons flows en masse through our commercial port. He has urged that one hundred percent inspection of containers is needed to save lives and restore safety. We are facing a true crisis of methamphetamine on Guam. The data are staggering. Guam's chief medical examiner reported in twenty twenty-three an average of nearly four meth overdoses per month, which is a five hundred percent increase over the four deaths in all of twenty twenty-one. In other words, methamphetamine now kills more Guamanians than guns, cars, or street violence. The human toll of meth feeds straight into rising crime. Law enforcement reports that hundreds of criminal arrests each year are linked to methamphetamine use. These range from property crimes and domestic violence to armed robbery and murder. The Pacific Island Times detailed two recent killings, one of a Japanese tourist and one of a local restaurant goer. The involved suspects had prior meth convictions. In other words, Guam's murder rate is increasingly driven by our meth problem. It is no coincidence when drugs pour freely through our port, addiction and crime skyrocket. Multi-agency task force report that of the seventy-seven drug arrests they made in calendar twenty thirty-two, uh, twenty twenty-three, seventy-two were for methamphetamine, and only three were for other drugs. Likewise, Guam Police Forensic Labs confirm that two-thirds of all drugs sampled, analyzed in twenty twenty-four were methamphetamine. In sum, meth is by far the dominant drug fueling arrests and incarcerations here. Yet, under current procedures, smugglers encounter almost no inspection at the very gateway that brings drugs to our shore. This crisis has real financial and social costs. Emergency medical services responding to overdoses, courts and jails processing addicts and offenders, and families torn apart by addiction and violence. Opponents worry about commerce delays from one hundred percent inspections, but I say the commerce we cannot afford is that which brings addiction, overdose, and deadly gangs to our island. And we need not choose between commerce and security. This bill offers a practical way to protect community safety without crippling trade. By enabling public-private partnership, we invite expertise and investment from private sector partners to help Guam Customs reach that one hundred percent screening goal efficiently. In effect, we would contract with vendors experienced in high-volume cargo. Third, and we would build capacity for new scanning centers, x-ray machines, mobile detectors, container robots. Lots of things that Guam has long lacked. The private partner could manage operations or technology while CQA maintains oversight and law enforcement control. Why is a public-private partnership the smart choice? First, it leverages private capital and innovation so the government does not bear the full cost of expensive equipment and facilities. Second, private partners bring logistic know-how and can handle logistics volume smoothly. Think of how cargo terminals process shipments worldwide. That can be done here, too. Third, this approach can include user fees or co-funding that ensures the project is financially sustainable. In short, we can have our cake and eat it, too. We get comprehensive screening done while minimizing new borrowing or taxes. In fact, federal and local grant programs might even help such a partnership, especially given the security implications. Importantly, under a PPP, any equipment or facility built can remain government-owned if desired or revert to government control after contract terms, so we protect Guam's long-term interest. Public-private partnerships are not a wild experiment. They are used by Customs and Border Protection and local governments at many US ports. Nationwide, CBP's Donations Acceptance and reimbursable services program ensure and encourage companies and municipalities to fund border infrastructure. For example, the city of Laredo, Texas, one of America's busiest land-border crossings, financed and built four new free and secure trade commercial vehicle lanes at its port, greatly expediting inspections. Fortified cargo processing lanes in Del Rio, Texas, were similarly built through a partnership of the city government and CBP. Closer to Guam's mission, note that at major US seaports, terminal operators and freight companies often invest in scanning technology and security. The US Government Accountability Office has documented numerous cases where private funds or private grants funded CBP equipment, whether it be x-ray machines, radiation detectors, or other things. Public-private partnerships are both available and effective. They allow ports to reach near one hundred percent container screening, as has been demonstrated in leading ports around the world, without requiring CBP to double or triple its own staff overnight. Applying this model to Guam means we can tap new resources to finally inspect every incoming container if necessary. A robust PPP could install stationary x-ray port machines at the port, mobile x-ray vans for remote screening, automated conveyor systems to unload containers, and expanded security holding areas for inspected goods. Any of these components would normally take years to fund and build on their government budgets alone. Through partnership, however, the timeline can be compressed and the execution can draw on proven private sector expertise. This bill is not limited to stopping drugs. More thorough cargo screening also protects Guam's unique ecology and agriculture from catastrophic invasive species. Our island is extraordinarily vulnerable. A lack of natural predators, isolated ecosystem, and years of trade all create opportunities for pests. We all know the brown tree snake story and the coconut rhinoceros beetle. Each day that a live snake or exotic insect sneaks through, unchecked cargo is a day closer to losing another species or crippling an industry. Given how easily the pests hide in cartons, crates, and pallets, the only real defense is vigilance at the border. By approving a partnership to inspect every box and container, we dramatically reduce the chance that a destructive. we dramatically reduce the chance that a destructive invader slips in. In sum, this bill directly targets multiple threats with a single practical solution. It acknowledges the problem, the data, it speaks for itself. It matches the remedy to the problem. One hundred percent screening of cargo enabled by public-private partnerships that is financially feasible. And more importantly, it offers accountability. The public-private partnership can be structured with performance metrics so that Guam retains oversight and can ensure the partnership delivers results. Importantly, this approach is cost-effective. Rather than asking the government to fund an entirely new customs brigade and massive new infrastructure out of the general fund, we allow private investors or operators to front much of the cost, recouping it through service fees or shared revenues. Any upfront cost for Guam would be limited, and we would even structure user fees for shipping companies to cover a share of scanning operations. Moreover, by intercepting contraband and pests, we avoid enormous future costs. Fewer drugs in our hospitals and prisons, fewer crime victims, and no need for costly environmental mitigation down the line. Bill one oh eight dash thirty-eight is a common sense way to meet this crisis head-on. I urge this committee and the members of the legislature to remember the facts. Very few containers are inspected now. Meth deaths and arrests are spiraling. By passing this bill, we have an opportunity to finally close the door on smugglers, protect our borders, and safeguard Guam's future, all while making use of modern partnerships that have worked elsewhere. Let us move Guam to one hundred percent cargo scanning and turn this vision into reality. I ask my colleagues to once again support, and thank you, Mr. Chair. I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. Director Paredo, please identify yourself and likewise, Mr. General, please.
Okay. Evening. Good morning, Senator Lohan, Chairman of the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs and Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs, Senator William Parkinson and other members of the committee from the thirty-one legislation. My name is Ike Paredo, and I am the director for the Customs and Quarantine Agency. I'm here to provide testimony on Bill one oh eight dash thirty-eight and act to amend ten four oh four and to add ten four oh four point one of Article four, Chapter ten, Title twelve, and relative to authorizing Customs and Quarantine Agency to enter into a public-private partnership to screen or cargo entering Guam by its port of entry authored by Senator Parkinson. I want to begin by extending my appreciation and the efforts of Senator Parkinson in advance. The capability of CQ to improve our mandates to facilitate the movement of trade and commerce, collection of taxes due to the government protect our island from invasive species and detrimental plants and animal pests and diseases, inspection of regulated and prohibited goods and merchandise, and combating the illicit movement of contraband and dangerous goods, especially illegal drugs. The proposed bill aims to support our efforts to screen goods and items entering our island by entering into public-private partnership with non-governmental and non-custums entities. While there are benefits in the public-private partnership, there are some concerns with concern with the current language in the bill that I would like to highlight as well as provide some recommendations to consider. Currently, the language contained in the bill states screening or cargo as the language suggests. This will permit CQA or PAG to allow private entities and their personnel to conduct customs screening or physical inspection of merchandise and goods entering the ports of entry. This is unclear if the intent is to do so. I would advise against such authorization. Unlike police powers, those of other government agencies with investigatory or regulatory responsibilities, Customs Border Search Authority allows duly sworn customs officials at the ports of entry that the latitude needed for appropriately fulfilling our mandates in screening, physically inspecting or verifying conveyances, goods, merchandise, and persons moving through place of entry. Customs Border Search Authority is an exception to the warrant or probable cause permitting only sworn CQA officers to carry out searches and seizures that are very different from those undertaken by other government officials or agents. These special powers are codified in CQA statutes in Title V, and have been tested through case laws over the years. Apart from the actual fiscal screening, x-raying, or inspection as government official, CQA is provided the permit to sensitive information that includes taxpayers' identification, pricing, supplier information, retail or wholesale information, and other documents that are provided to a public trust, which must be safeguarded from unauthorized or dereliction of dissemination. I recommend that the public-private partnership language does not contain any inclination or mention of conducting these responsibilities carried out by sworn customs officers, but mentions other areas that such as partnership can permit. This includes entering to a partnership for construction and maintenance of customs sterile containers, inspection facility at the PAG, partnership for delivery and maintenance of scanning equipment or other services that a public-private partnership can assist in supporting customs operation at the port or other CQA areas. Second, the placement of proposed legislations within the Port Authority of Guam statute in Chapter ten, Title twelve, is inappropriate. In recent years, CQA and PAG relationship has fostered tremendously. PAG continues to be key partners with CQA with our duties, not only at the port facilities, but also with the marinas that falls under their inventory. We value our collaboration, mutual assistance, that has ensured the delivery of the essential government services and logistics of goods entering and leaving the island. Although both entities occupy the same operating environment, our mission, mandates, and responsibilities in service we both deliver are different. PAG is primarily responsible for maintaining its facilities and capabilities, providing cargo handling and storage operations, mooring vessels and securing the facility. CQA's role is to facilitate legitimate trade, regulate the movement of prohibited or restricted goods, and protect against invasive plants and diseases. Since our mandate and functions are different, I recommend that the amended legislation be more appropriately placed in CQA statutes under Title V, Chapter seventy-three. It is recommended and is more suited for the funding source of the public-private partnership being amended in Title eleven, GCA, Chapter twenty-eight, contained in the title Estaguan U.S. law. It is recommended that any public-private partnership, the CQA can enter into expanded to other areas of CQA jurisdiction, not solely for PAG operation, allowing CQA to maximize such partnership in our airport, air cargo, military, and postal areas of operation. Thus, it is recommended that language for these allowances be included. Thank you for the opportunity and for hearing my recommendations. I'm available for questions from my committee.
Uh, good, good morning, senators, members of the, uh, the committee, Senator Jesse Lohan, Senator Chris Duñez, Senator, uh, Chris Barnett, and of course, the, the author of Bill one oh eight, Senator William Parkinson. I want to, again, once again, extend my appreciation of your efforts to try and strengthen our capabilities with customs through this, uh, public, uh, private partnership, uh, bill that you're proposing. Uh, as highlighted in the, as the director has highlighted in his testimonies, uh, there are some areas in the bill that we would like to discuss and, and to resolve so that there can be more clarity and as far as what the public-private partnership can engage uh, with customs, uh, customs border, border authorities are very sacred. It's something that we hold dearly. It is a public trust that's given to us and that working in a customs environment, not any law enforcement agency can come in and be bestowed with such powers. Thus, having a private company come in and have access to even the information or even conducting x-ray screening, which is somewhat, um, not as intrusive, is still something of a custom search that only sworn officers are, uh, allowed to undertake. Uh, I, we really recommend that, uh, we hear the, uh, you, you listen to and, and be guided by the recommendations by the director, um, uh, with his recommendations on improving upon the, the public-private partnership bill. Indeed, it's something that customs indeed can look into. Uh, it is a way to improve our services, a quicker way for us to obtain this equipment that we need to conduct more inspections, uh, at not only the port authority, but also at other areas within customs jurisdiction. Uh, we must also remember that, uh, illicit narcotics is not just moving, it could be moving from all ports of entry. So, once you saturate one area, the nefarious actors will just move on. Um, likewise, there are some issues with our taxing, with the use tax, with our collections. Uh, this will assist us as well in that it'll provide us more information for us to determine what goods need to be and should be taxed. But again, I believe the, uh, the public-private partnership should be expanded to all areas of CQA jurisdiction and that this amendment or this proposed legislation be embedded within CQA statute and the funding authority be amended in the taxation GCA found in eleven GCA Chapter, uh, twenty-eight. Uh, thank you for the opportunity, and I look forward for any questions from the committee.
Thank you, and before I turn it over to, uh, ask, um, committee members to, to, uh, ask their questions, let me ask a few questions here. I think you already answered this. In regards to the delegation of authority, um, can you do that right now as written? Because my understanding that you're the only law enforcement agency basically that is not required to have probable cause for inspection, right? And, and so in a private entity wouldn't be, even if you authorized that, you wouldn't, they wouldn't be able to do that, right? If that, is that correct or?
In, insofar as the inspection is concerned.
Yeah, okay. Likewise, the, uh, where do the, uh, use taxes leakages happen?
Uh, right now, the, the, we're, we're identifying that, uh, we're trying to get a grip of, of the leakage of use tax. Right now, as it stands, at the port authority, any goods that are subject to the use tax, by law, they are required to be paid before official release by customs. Uh, the scenario up at the airport is a little bit different because of, uh, federal statute or federal case law that has, uh, cuffed, uh, local, uh, authority in as far as the movement of commerce by air freight carriers. So, up at the air cargo division, uh, our air cargo section, we assess the taxes that are being transported by third-party, uh, courier companies on behalf of their customers. So, it's assessed, the goods are released, and the documentation is forwarded to the appropriate agency, which is Revantax, that can go and collect the taxes. Um, one of the biggest leakages that we do have, and we've known for the longest time as far as, um, taxes, is the U.S. postal system. Right now, uh, goods coming in from the postal system, uh, our ability to get in there and, and collect the use tax, which is due to the government of Guam, we do not have that ability, especially if there's a lot, when there's a large movement of goods coming in from the U.S. mainland purchased by taxpayers here and move, and being shipped to the postal system to Guam.
Yeah, um, okay. Over the past four years, uh, both Senators Tina Munya Barnes and of course, Mary, Senator, uh, Mary Camacho have passed two laws. One of them is the Digital Manifest and the other, of course, the Harmonized Code. Um, it is my understanding, um, this would take out the ancient paper, of course, based screening and allow for digital screening of imports, identifying known bad actors, of course, and suspicious imports before these, uh, hit our shores. This, uh, would also let a few, um, allow few customs officers to be able to work with inter-agency partners such as, of course, the Coast Guard Intelligence, FBI and DEA in a more efficient, uh, way, identifying suspicious containers before they get, uh, to Guam so that, uh, we know which container is flagged. I know we're finally closer to the implementation, uh, but can you share a little bit more on the process on, uh, you know, and the progress that's happening in regards to the, those two bills that have, that have passed?
Thank you for that question, Senator. Yes, we're moving forward, automating customs, modernizing the way we do things in the port. And, and that's what we don't have at this point in time. And we've been working, uh, for the past two years in moving forward in trying to implement the, uh, the, the harmonized system that is used throughout the world uh, insofar as trade facilitation is concerned. Now, in order for us to move towards that particular objective, of course, we need to establish the platform, and the platform that we're working on is a customs automated system that is specifically tailored for customs. This particular platform will help customs not only identify all the containers that are coming in, but it can also conduct risk assessment on, on each of those cargoes that are, that are bound for Guam. And in itself, by automate, uh, automating customs, it will give us an advantage to not only properly screen all containers, but also work in tandem with the other government agencies as, uh, all these goods that are imported into Guam are, are accounted for. And, and the purpose of the, uh, of the harmonized system is to identify each and every commodity that's coming into Guam and provide the needed data that, that comes with it.
If I could just interject here, um, yes, the, the automation component is one of the, is part of the project, but the modernization and use of the HS coding system uh, in the entry of goods is what we are currently working at. Um, the law allowed us to move forward with automation and use of the harmonized system to modernize our operations. By using the HS system or the HS coding system, it will require all importers to itemize their imports using a standardized code. This was, this now, this type of, by using this code, it will allow the software to identify the goods, but it also, also identify, the other requirements would be that the importer, their supplier, their information would have to be uploaded into a system where there's capability of doing risk and threat assessments as well as providing, as well as the opportunity for customs to interject our own, uh, fields of concerns or interests of what we need to look at, to ping at, where the system can identify. Uh, will help us, will aid customs in identifying which goods, uh, should be referred for further review, document review, or highlight for actual physical inspection. So, again, Senator, this is, this is something that is totally new to Guam. Uh, for the past fifty-some years since customs operation, uh, we've been heavily paper-based, a lot of our officers, to include myself, we review documents, uh, uh, mountains of documents of goods coming in. So, by using this model with, uh, with the HS and moving towards automation, it is standard practice within all custom, within majority of the customs administrations around the world that is used to facilitate trade, uh, trade and commerce. And this is just but one element of automating and, and modernizing, um, our abilities to, uh, secure our borders and regulate the, regulate goods that are coming in and catching any type of illicit contraband that's coming in. But in hand with that, in line with that too, of course, we are investing in technology with x-ray system. And I believe this private-public-private partnership bill will actually give us that opportunity as well. However, we do feel that some, um, amendments, suggestions, or recommendations should be added so that it is clear and it can provide customs better capabilities to expand this private-public partnership to other areas of our jurisdiction.
If, if I don't, not mistaken, um, um, my understanding that we're probably the last, um, destination basically that, that's yet to come on board with the harmonized system, right? Am I, am I correct in that?
Uh, to use HS within, uh, Oceania, yes. I can say that. We just finished our conference. And, you know, and you got, you got to look at the, the reason why a lot of these smaller economies, smaller countries in the Pacific, as well as smaller countries in the Pacific, as well as the larger economies around the world, is because of trade facilitation, HS. They need, everybody needed to be on the same plane, on the same music, but also, a lot of these areas are duty ports. So, it's critical that this information is transmitted, so that proper assessment in tariffs and duties are done. I'm not an advocate of making Guam a duty port, I don't want, is my personal opinion, but the scheme or the tools that are used can definitely be used for not only taxation, but definitely for identification of illicit contraband, identification of highly regulated goods such as plant and animals that are coming into Guam.
Now, let me ask this, how long, what is the timeline, what's your guys' timeline for CQA to, to come online with that, and likewise, not only, not only CQA, but for the importers to be able to, to come online as well, and everybody on the same page, and then, you know, here's the start date, everybody's, everybody, everybody's going to be doing this. What is the timeline for you guys, and then, again, getting it out to the importers?
We are, we are pushing to complete our rules and regulations by the end of the year, so that we can submit it. We understand that it is not something that will be, it will go through the triple, it has to go through the AAA process. And with the rules and regulations, and with some of the authorities existing and the existing law that allowed us to do that, the reality is that we're going to have to put in civil penalties for either erroneous mistakes, intentional mistakes, trying to deceive, or submitting fraudulent documents. So, those are the things that are working, that we are working in implementing into these rules and regulations. That is necessary. If we don't have that, and we're going to try to implement just using HS through rules and regulations, without no actual, without actual teeth to ensure compliance, then we're still like back in the drawing board. So, that's our timeline. We want, we want the opportunity to the public and to the stakeholders that we service, the ability to digest the rules and regulations, get their input, and do trainings before we implement it, before we even turn on any system to now move it to an automated process. So, both, it's going to be a training for both CQA, which we've already have had with our OCO consultants, who have done about trainings for about twenty officers, just to get them the experience of using HS code. So, we're going to have to extend that to the agency, as well as to the importing and exporting community here on Guam.
Now, in clarity, again, that, you know, this body, the legislature, has been criticized that the implementation or passage of the harmonized system is just another way to tax the people of Guam. Can you, can you clarify that in regards to that? Because we said that everybody else is using this in regards to more efficient ways and tax leakages and all of that, but again, the body has been criticized that this is, this is just a, a roundabout way in, in taxing, taxing the people of Guam.
Well, definitely not, dear Senator. It's not designed to tax the people of Guam. It's, the primary platform is, is to capture all imported goods imported to our island. Of course, it's going to improve the revenue source that we're looking at, such as use tax, because we'll be upfront with identifying all the loopholes that are being confronted at the port of entry with respect to use tax, and will probably increase the amount of use tax that we're seeing coming to our borders, but it's not definitely to tax.
Let me ask you one more question for my colleagues. What is your estimate of, of non-reporting at this point, when we go to the harmonized system, okay? What do you estimate that loss is versus when we go to the harmonized system, that capture rate? What do you think that loss, what do you estimate the loss may?
By moving to the harmonized system, and then also automating our processes, we can have a better, we will have the ability to track the, what importers are bringing, what importers are bringing into the island, the frequencies. Of course, right now, the use tax laws, there are some exemptions that are given. I think, I believe, I'm confident that automating will capture that information for us, so that if somebody has, for example, exceeded their exemption, that will be able to, it will be recorded into the system, and the system will flag us that now this person's import is subject to the four percent use tax owed to the government. It's, it's, like you asked, is it a tax, is it, is it tax? The harmonized system is developed around duties and tariff, but we're using it for other customs functions, that's what, that's the purpose of it. Use tax is just a small portion, but we're using it to collect data, that information that everyone needs, we're going to be using it for risk and threat assessment, we're using it for accountability, we're going to use it to ensure that we're properly assessing our customs user fee. So, that's the real intent of using HS, and then migrating that into an actual harmonized, actual automated platform.
Thank, thank you. Senator Tadic? No, he's going to go last.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Thank you for sticking around. I know it was kind of long on the last, we had an appointment of an appointee, so I appreciate you being here. You know, this is not new, actually, looking into private-public partnerships with the scanning program that we're looking at. I mean, we've discussed this in the thirty-fifth Guam Legislature, and then moving on to the thirty-sixth, it was discussed again. So, that being said, I mean, other than what, you know, you analyzing this legislation, but what has Customs in quarantine done to try and move in this kind of direction? And if this is not the direction that you want to move into, to provide a more efficient scanning, comprehensive program for our goods coming into the island, what other possibilities are there?
Well, the, the private partnership that I'm, that I'm looking at from a customs standpoint is, is more or less in the infrastructure, providing Customs a better infrastructure to meet our mandates. That's the type of partnership that I'm looking at. We're trying to build a Customs container inspection facility down at the port, and I'm hoping that to this partnership, that they will come in, build this particular infrastructure for Customs, and then we'll probably make some arrangements for a lease-to-own type of agreement that we can undertake with the agency, and that will help us a lot in working with the, with the private partnership mode.
Well, so, that means you have been researching this type of program, right? And then, if I can hear from?
Yes, yes. The Director has given us instructions to look at availabilities of public-private partnerships. And especially now that we're, we would like to build a container inspection facility down at the port, that will allow us to do more inspections down there in a, in a secure and sterile facility. That's one of the options that is on the table to doing that. We understand that we may not have the financial resources, but as what the bill mentions, maybe a portion of the use tax could be used to fund such, such lease-to-own projects. And, but that will include not just the structure itself, and the, and the equipment, and the, and the layout that we need, but that will also include x-ray machines that the, the partner will be obligated to repair and ensure that it's continuously functioned. And this could, and this won't be just your standard mobile ones, it could be, we're looking at, we had, we had officers look at stationary drive-through x-ray portals that are being used in the mainland, so those were all brought back, and we're, we're working on getting a, an A&E to design such features of that, for that facility.
Speaking of A&E, that was another question I had. If you've been already looking at this, I mean, we've been tracking for how many years working on the PPP for, for the Customs on the scanners, is there any amount on the A&E, the cost on that?
The, the actual A&E that we're, we're looking at, just to get moving with this particular project, a little bit over two million dollars.
Two million, right? Okay. And we've already secured this section of the port, you know, that, this property that was outside, that's already been secured, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Have you had an opportunity, since you have been looking into this for quite some time, right? Have you had an opportunity to discuss with the businesses, or the importers, or logistic companies, and to consult with how this would affect them if we were to do the, this type of mechanism? Have you brought them into the mix?
We haven't had formal meetings with them, that has been memorialized, but we do plan on bringing them in and discussing what we're going to be doing. We have mentioned it, you know, when we do meet with them here and there. But we do, what we do currently have is, we do operate container freight stations that are operated by private companies that are authorized by law. So, those are some of the things that we already have in existence already with partnering with, with private entities to, to conduct customs inspections, or station custom, station goods that are subject to customs inspection, that are vetted and are monitored by one of our compliance units. But definitely, we will, you know, when, we will discuss with them. I think transparency is very important.
Yeah, absolutely. I think this would also give them their input, you know, as, as you work together on, I can only imagine this would be, you know, benefit for all those companies working with the port, and logistics, and movers, and, you know, those who work in the industry to get these cargoes out faster. I'm pretty sure they're going to, but I'm pretty sure they can also add some input, so maybe a Director, you can put together some kind of task force to have these companies come in and be a part of this makeup of how we can make this work.
Thank you for the question, Senator. Yes, we've, we've been working with, for example, the Port Use Group down at the Port, Authority of Guam. We've been meeting with them, sharing our, our goals and objectives on trying to reach this particular infrastructure that we're trying to build down at the port, and have been sharing with them to include, sharing with them the modernization project that we're moving forward.
Okay, so you have been talking to them? So, what is some of the outcomes? What is some of the conversations they're bringing to the table on this PPP?
They're, they're very interested insofar as automation, because that will give them an advantage insofar as the movement of goods moving out from, from the port, and we can help facilitate trade by implementing a much more modern platform with respect to trade facilitation. With respect to the, the infrastructure that we're trying to put together, it will allow them more time to, to, to meet with Customs, so that we can help facilitate the, the actual movement of containers as it comes into our port, and that's what they're interested in.
Okay, so it, it means that the importers and the logistic companies are all for this, it sounds like, you know, to move something like a PPP through. So, I appreciate you continuing to work with them and the community down at the port to find another way, because really, it's, it's way too long. We've been discussing this since the thirty-fifth Guam Legislature, since I've been in, and, you know, it's, it's been a while, so, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Tadic. Vice Duenas.
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair. Certainly appreciate the intent of the author, clearly. I think that Customs is recognized, and with the, with the call really for maximizing and getting even up to a hundred percent inspection, I think that, when I've been questioned about this, I think the, the primary response is, is that the ability to have the x-ray system put in place, given, you know, and you've been working on that, that is really the key, you know, aside from physical inspection, and of course, those inspections leading to further inspections down the line. Mr. Chair, I just don't see if the testimony and the review is correct from Customs. I don't know that this bill is the vehicle at this point for the intent of what's being put forward, so I appreciate the testimony from Customs. It looks like it may have slipped past legal a little bit in terms of the statutory construction, but certainly in the intent is there, and I'm glad Customs, you know, is recognizing that there's, there's opportunities, particularly with a funding source, and particularly with inspection, but I think that when we, it's clear to me that the privatization of that service directly is going to cross the line in terms of the ability within our current code and our current structure now. So, I appreciate the, the hearing, Mr. Chair. I think the bill needs a lot of work, and I, I don't even think markup would accomplish that, I think it would have to have another hearing, and I appreciate the input from, from Customs. But that's really the only comments that I have. Like I said, the intent is certainly laudable, and I think, I think Customs even, you know, has the same intent, but as far as the ability of, you know, the way the bill is structured this time, I don't think the mechanism works. So, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice. Senator Barnett?
Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair, for the opportunity to speak on the bill, just kind of reading between the lines, it kind of sounds like they're going to throw the bill in the trashcan, which I don't necessarily know is justified, because according to your testimony, Captain and Director, you want the parts that step on your authority's toes, so to speak, to be tweaked, and you're actually asking for this public-private partnership to be expanded beyond the Port Authority of Guam. Am I correct to summarize your testimony that way?
Yes, you're right.
Okay. I kind of want to just, I guess, start with the idea of a hundred percent container inspection, because this has been a big debate between the administration and the Attorney General, I'm sure you've seen the billboards. So, can we just speak first, because that's the bill's main intent? I know we've talked a lot about the harmonious coding, and kind of got away from that, but the bill's main intent is to enlist a public-private partnership, so that we can screen all cargo at the port. So, can you just kind of speak to the, the concept of a hundred percent inspections?
Well, let me just, Senator, thank you for that question. Well, let me just make it clear. All containers that are coming into our island are screened. No containers come into our ports without any type of vetting. All containers that are coming in are properly screened. When you talk about screening, I mean, it comes in from the vessel to the port, and then from the port to Customs, where Customs will come in and screen all these documentations that needs to be, to be vetted prior to the release. So, all containers are screened when it comes in to our port. A hundred percent inspection is different. This type of inspection means that a container has been identified, based on the manifest, based on the risk assessment that the officers that are analyzing the containers at the port will determine that a hundred percent inspection will be conducted on this particular container. A hundred percent inspection is taking that container, dropping it to the ground, opening up the container, offloading it, completely offload each and every cargo inside that container, and then do the inspection that's needed, that's required. That is a hundred percent inspection. My understanding from a customs standpoint is that nowhere in the world, from a customs administration, does that type of procedure. Why? Because it's impossible to move all those containers at a given time, and it will plug up the movement of containers within the port before the next shipment comes in. So, if you mandate a hundred percent inspection at the stage that we're on right now, we will need to even triple our manpower just to do that. That's what a hundred percent inspection is.
Thank you, Mr. Director.
In addition to that, Senator, I just wanted to say that the only containers that are given a hundred percent inspection at this point in time are all our produce that are coming in, and there's a reason for that. They're given a hundred percent inspection because of invasive species. So, that is my directive insofar as a hundred percent inspection, to include all private vehicles that are coming in are given a hundred percent inspection.
Thank you for that, sir. And I, I think that was what was kind of frustrating from the public, is that, you know, the, the conversation was put out that, hey, a hundred percent inspection saves lives, right? And the response that we got was that, like you just said, it's impossible. So, can you just? So can you just share with the viewing public what is possible?
What we're doing right now, based on the staffing requirements that we have and, and based on, on the data that I have, if I'm not mistaken, we have an average of close to 1,900 containers that comes into the port every month. Of that, 1,900 containers that are coming in, probably about 200 are given 100% inspection. That's the percentage, and I think it's, if, if I break it down, I think about 7%. The average, for example, United States Customs, who imports millions, I don't know how many, 50 million containers a year, they average less than 8%, 100% inspection.
So, Mr. Director, given our, and you know, I want to commend the author, because I really appreciated his open and, you know, we, we have that in common, I think, our hatred of crystal methamphetamine and what it's done to our island. So, you know, we can talk about other ports and, you know, we're inspecting this many, but what can we do to improve the number of inspections? You know, granted that we are seeing, even with these record seizures of crystal methamphetamine and, you know, now we're seeing cocaine again in some of these pullovers and these arrests, because I think it's warranted. People want to see us try and do more and understand how critical the harmonious coating machine is in flagging, for example, importers or types of products being brought in that are traditionally used in, in drug smuggling and bringing in contraband and stuff. So what can we do to increase that percentage or what is being done?
I, I think just, just to, to add on to some of the numbers first, I think we're, we're close to like 800 containers are coming in through the island every week. That's 800. Look at the capacity of the Port Authority, you have cargo coming in, cargo going out. Like, like what the Director mentioned, physical inspection is physical inspection. Everything out, every box open. It's a lot. I think that's why we like this bill, is the private, uh, uh, public-private partnership, is because we can expand to, although the law, the, the bill says scanning, we can use, maybe we can use these partnerships so that they can provide us with the scanning tools. We, like I mentioned, we are looking at X-ray technology scanning that if, and we, you know, we, we have to work with the Port Authority, work with the stakeholders. Is it feasible, optional? Do we have enough land down there to do the drive-through of every containers going into a scanning machine? And that's what's the beauty about this private, uh, public-private partnership, is that maybe we partners with these companies so that they can deliver, maintain and supply us a drive-through stationary or X-ray machine that is going to be constantly worked on, that either we're going to be renting and if it, if it needs to be changed out, they're gonna, they're, they agree that they're gonna swap it with a new one and that everything will be running continuously. I think that's the, the real good thing about this, about, I, I understand that everybody's concerned about, that we are all concerned about the, the, the drug issues here on Guam. And scanning these, scanning these, these containers machine, we're still looking at, it's, it's a very valuable option for everything coming in. But we still need to study these things about what's the impact, how we would impact, what is the impact to the end user at the end? Especially, you know, we have this position in customs that 90, 90%, 95% of the, of the people that we deal with, they are law-abiding citizens, they want to do it. And we don't want to, of course, we want to find a, a medium, a, 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 a point in between where we're doing our job even more effectively to combat illicit activity, but ensuring that trade and commerce is flowing at the same time. So definitely, it's having, entering into a public-private partnership with X-ray and, and, you know, that, that's why it's very important. We've got to find line what this partner can and cannot do, and especially getting into border authority and so, that's a lot of the legal mess. So that's why I really recommend that we, we take a look at and, and be, and be definite of what the intent of the law. But looking into scanning as much as possible, you know, that's, that definitely is on the table. How can we do that? But 100% inspection, like the, the Director mentioned, that's a, a lot of, a lot of administrations in around the world, they don't do that. Maybe if we're in really, really small economies where they're only having one or two containers a week, they can be doing 100% inspection, but, you know, it's not only for the customs, it's not only for the traders, but we also have to look at the facility. And again, the Port Authority is just one port of entry and we have to also expand to the other ports of entry that, you know, contraband can be coming in and where other goods are also coming in.
Because I, I know, Director Paredo, I've interviewed you so many times and you've been very consistent in saying on the record that you believe drugs are coming in at the port, but the challenge has just been to find out how, why, who, et cetera, right? So I, I wanted to ask, because I did get some concerns from some of the, the port employees and I just want to ask this on the record, is there any point where an importer can access a container without the supervision of customs and before there's been a, a customs screening or inspection on, on these containers?
Thank you for the question, Senator. At this point in time, I can say that when a vessel comes in, we do have reports at times when a container is offloaded, that the seal is broken. So I, I can say, do we have evidence that the port employees were the ones doing it? From my perspective, from my experience, it's gonna take time for port employees to open containers while the container is still on the vessel, because these containers are stacked up all the way up and, and it will take, you know, it, it, it's not just going there, breaking the seal without being seen. I feel that some of this broken seals probably happened before it came in to our island and, and before it was offloaded onboard the vessel. But I'm not gonna say that at this point in time, the, the, the procedures down at the port is that when the containers are offloaded, they are placed in a particular areas where the containers are put back-to-back, the entrance back-to-back, where nobody can have access to these containers until customs gets the information that it's gonna be cleared.
Okay.
So that's the mechanism that's being used down at the port.
So, so at any point after the container is offloaded from the ship, is, are any private entities, not port employees, but, you know, people who are bringing in goods through the port allowed to access the containers prior to a customs screening or without a customs supervision?
If, the, the, so the Port Authority has their own security protocols to maintain the integrity of the container yard where the cargo is held. There is access by private entities on official business. They do have, I know that they do have patrols. Is there a possibility? Normally, the, these private companies are only inside the port when the port is open or when they're there because they have a ship in. They're not, they're not, to my understanding, they're not permitted to just traverse the, the boney or the, the container yard while they have no operations at all. So specifically, private companies are allowed, are authorized by the port to get in there when they're there for official business, which is pulling out containers or working with them. We do have protocol, we do have procedures and protocols that are in place, since the Director did mention about broken seals, where office, customs officers responds to events when seals are broken. And in the event that further inspection is warranted, we have protocols in place to secure that container and conduct 100% inspection. So we work hand-in-hand with the Port Authority and Port Authority Police in, in ensuring and maintaining the, the security of the containers that are coming in. But the, the reality is sometimes the, the seals will get broken, could be intentionally or unintentional, so.
Thank, thank you for that. Yeah, and I, I agree. I, I support giving you, customs, the more authority to do what it needs to do and I just, you know, and if we tweak the bill or if it requires a new bill with more, you know, close coordination with you guys to make sure that, you know, we're not stepping on any toes or crossing any lines or taking authorities that you need away from you. That, that's all I'm worried about. And you know, with the public-private partnership, I know that it was said in this hearing that, you know, there are certain senators who support it, but I, I just have to say, if you go back and watch the session, there were senators who stood up and supported a bill that would have instituted a public-private partnership, wholeheartedly even asked to be cosponsors and then turned around and voted no. So I really want to make sure that we, we vet this proposal. And I agree that we've moved the statute, especially because I'm, I'm sure you're aware, Mr. Chair, we received another letter from the concerned employees of the Port Authority of Guam, and they cite a number of concerns with the general manager's leadership there. And this is not to reflect on you guys, but I just want to put this on the record, because they are again asking for some exercise of oversight from this committee. I know that the Chair had said previously in media reports that he was going to have an oversight and that didn't happen. So I just wanted to just, again, officially lodge this on the record that we're receipt of that. So I totally relate to your concerns about placing it in the, the appropriate statute. And I think at the end of the day, yes, we all want to make sure that we're doing whatever we can to stop the, we're failing obviously to stop the flow of crystal meth and cocaine and fentanyl and now we're hearing about these new, you know, uber-dangerous drugs that are making our way into the island. And like I said, we've seen the record seizures, I mean, hundreds and hundreds of pounds of, of crystal methamphetamine. I know you guys are involved with that with your work with the United States Postal Service, so I want to commend you for that. But I think that the crucial missing piece has always been the Port Authority of Guam. And I guess it's still true, there hasn't been a significant seizure at the Port Authority in many years, Director Paredo?
That's true.
Yeah. And so I know some would, would take that to mean that, oh, I guess no drugs are coming in, but I, I think they're outsmarting us. And I'm, I'm hoping that with the implementation of the harmonious coding machine, which again should log every thing that comes through our port of entry and, and red-flag those items that, you know, are suspicious or those importers who maybe not have crossed all the i's and dotted the t's. So I stand in support of any kind of partnership that's gonna increase customs' ability to screen all the containers or as many containers as we can coming into the, the Port Authority of Guam, because I, I think this is something we haven't addressed legislatively. So, you know, I support the author's intent, truly. I know a lot of us say, oh, I support the intent of the bill, and then they tear the bill up and they crucify it, but I do, Senator Parkinson, I support this and I want to work closely with you to, to give customs the tools and the authorities they need so that, you know, we, we can make a dent in the flow of the drugs that are, that are coming in, you know, para fama guanta. So, thank you, Director Paredo and Captain Mendiola for your testimony and I stand ready and committed to assist in any way. So, Sidozmasi, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Thank you, Senator Barnett. Vice, you wanted to say a few words?
Yeah, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, to address some of the mischaracterizations by the retiring speaker, I believe was directed in my direction. First of all, let's be clear, nobody has a monopoly on disdain from methamphetamine. I certainly have been at the forefront of that battle myself as a senator. Secondly, I, Mr. Paredo, I think you can, and Mr. Mendiola, you can attest to this. I was the prime cosponsor with now Congressman Moon, when he was a senator at the time, that established giving you the property and the location down in the port to set up for the inspection, 100% inspection system and X-ray machine. And I'm supporting now 1,000%, 1 million% the ability to screen all cargo and a public-private partnership, as you've enumerated. In fact, remember during that time, Mr. Paredo, I was even generous enough to say, let's use some of the invasive species funding that comes through to have another funding source as well, because it, like you said, it is not just for illicit drugs, it is also for invasive species and anything else that you may find as those containers are done 100% X-ray driving through in order to be able to do your job. In order to address the mischaracterization again, Mr. Chair, my comments were that you've done very good due diligence and you've probably had legal review on this bill to state that it needs to be put in the right code of law. We know in this body, many times when we introduce legislation, when there's such structural changes, meaning changing the code and even making sure that the title of, of the bill matches the intent, that that generally requires another public hearing as opposed to a markup in order to make sure that the public is informed and there's proper transparency on that. In closing on that point, which I want, again, I want to work with the committee and the author to make the bill better and have another public hearing, this is a one-page bill. It makes two underlying sections to two sections, along with no definitions and no explanation of exactly what customs had just put in their testimony, to make it a bill that's gonna work for them, to make it a bill that's gonna give you what you need for the public-private partnership. So like I said, while I applaud the attempt and the one-page introduction to codes of law that might be misplaced at this point is a great start, the statute needs a lot of work in terms of the construction and I stand ready to assist. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Vice. Senator Parkinson.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. So just a few questions. I know you already went over this again, but just for the sake of completion. As we are aware, CQA currently inspects a very small amount of the cargo, typically cited as less than 5% due to sheer volume and limited manpower. Would you confirm for the record that it is physically impossible for CQA to manually inspect every container and that no realistic increase in personnel alone could close this gap without significant operational delays to commerce?
I would say that for us to conduct 100% inspection on this containers, we will need additional resources. We will need, we'll probably triple our manpower down at the port to increase that percentage of containers being inspected at 100% level. If we were gonna do that with this present manning, it will create chaos down at the port. It's gonna create delays in the movement of commerce moving out from the port out to the community. So we definitely need to, to really look at that and, and, and provide the resources that, that needs to come with, with the, the inspection process.
Thank you for that, sir. Bill 108-38 is designed to support the acquisition and deployment of state-of-the-art scanning technology, such as higher rate, high-energy X-ray, gamma ray and possibly AI-assisted inspection. Can you elaborate for the record how technology would help CQA to approach or achieve 100% screening rates as recommended by law enforcement and supported by best practices at leading ports?
As I mentioned earlier, Senator, all containers are screened when it comes into the port. A container cannot just come into the port without the proper vetting. So we are screening all containers that are coming into the port. And, and I, I think what you need to define in this bill is define what screening is all about. Because screening, from my standpoint as a customs officer, is the things that we do when containers are imported at the port from the time entry is made. The officers that are vetting these containers, that are analyzing the containers are making the decisions whether or not this containers requires further inspection. Other than that, the documentation, the manifests are all screened, even before the cargo hits the port. So it's being done at this point in time. And we can, we can verify that, yes, all these containers that are on this manifest are properly screened when it comes in.
All right, thank you for that. So we know from previous experience that even when we've acquired mobile X-rays or scanners, keeping them operational has been a challenge due to funding gaps and maintenance. In your view, how does a public-private partnership as proposed by this bill help address those gaps by ensuring sustained investment in the equipment and maintenance and ongoing operational support?
I think, I think that's the, the intent of it, is that I think, I think that's the, the intent of it is that, you know, if you enter into this public-private partnership, I, I guess the comparison would be like renting a vehicle. You get in, you, you get into this agreement where the private company will be, provide, deliver the X-ray machines, scanning machines to customs, ensure that it's operable in the event that there are issues, they can address it right away if not replace it. So that's, that's the real thing that has the benefit that I see with this. And, and, and yes, we, we have our scanning machines that we do currently operate, we do, we've, we've encountered many maintenance problems and in some events, in some occasions, some of these machines are down because of maintenance issues that we're waiting on. But definitely with a public-private partnership where we can have that specific relation where they will provide us with the latest and greatest technologies that is affordable, that they can provide it to us. And in the event that it goes down or it needs to be worked on, that they will provide us a, a, a unit that we can be using until that primary one is brought up, brought up into operation, back up into operations.
So my intent with Bill 108-38 is about modernizing and funding the equipment and process side of inspections. I want to be very clear, I am not for outsourcing enforcement, interdiction or any customs authority. To that end, I will support additional statutory language as needed to help clean this up and guarantee this, you know, and so I look forward to the bill markup process to get that stuff cleared up. I know that Guam is finally transitioning to a digitized, harmonized tariff schedule. Do you think that advanced X-ray and screening, advanced scanning equipment can streamline the inspection of cargo?
Yes, we, we believe that that can be done, that can help as an additional tool. I never underestimate the officers of the, the, the human ability of, of, of our craft of customs officers, but definitely like canines, like the other tools that we do have, expanding our capabilities with technology, X-ray scanning, whatever's coming out will definitely help our operations.
Just as a specific, do you think that the automated data from the X-ray scanners will sync with electronic manifests and allow real-time updates?
I would have to look into the, the research on that information first. I would probably need more literature on that. If that's even out there, I'm not aware of it, but if it is out there, I would like to read in and read into it and see if that's definitely something that the agency can invest in.
Yeah, because I would like to see a, a closing of the gap between the production of a manifest and the updating with our own local manifest, right? I think that digitizing that process would go a long way towards closing the gaps where a lot of this, these, these drugs get traffic through and kind of fall through the gaps a little bit.
Definitely, if I'm understanding your question or where you're getting at is where you can use it almost as a, a referencing, right?
Yes.
Where it can verify the declaration based on imaging that it presents, where it can verify and use for accountability if indeed the item that they declared on paper or electronically is matching what's being exposed on, in the screen is, I believe that's what you're.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for, that was, that's what I was trying to get, I just didn't quite have the words for it. Thank you, yeah. I, and one last point, as I also want to acknowledge that this is not the first time this bill has been introduced. This is actually a copy of a bill introduced by Senator Pito Terlahe in the 35th Guam Legislature. And I introduced this bill as a continuation of his effort. Senator Terlahe, when he was a police officer, police officer at GPD, was instrumental in stopping the flow of heroin to Guam in the eighties and successfully eliminating that scourge on Guam. I think that in recognition of that, I think this is an appropriate vehicle to move forward a public-private partnership for inspection equipment. And I want to work with the committee to preserve Senator Terlahe's legacy and see this bill through. I think that the amount of drugs we have in our streets is evidence enough that with so many containers going through our ports, we need to do something to increase our ability to interdict and stop these drugs from coming in. And so I look forward to engaging with you fine folks to clean up any language we need to clean up. So ultimately, this bill serves the purpose it's trying to serve. There is nothing in this bill that cannot be changed, that cannot be amended or anything that is a, a deal breaker for me. Ultimately, the deal breaker for me is if the bill doesn't do what it's intended to do. And we want to make sure that we can look at our containers and have a high degree of certainty that we are preventing these terrible, terrible drugs from getting into our community. So I ask my colleagues to please support Bill 108-38 and I thank you gentlemen for your testimony and I thank you, Mr. Chair, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you, Senator Parkinson. And thank you as well for, again, clarifying the intent of, of the bill. You made it a lot clearer now that you want to be able to help CQA in the infrastructure that, that they, they may lack at this point and not crossing over into, again, the, the violations of the probable cause that only CQA is, has the authority to, to do so. And likewise, I just want to clarify as well in the screening versus inspections, as like passengers that get off the plane with their baggage, 100% of the passengers and bags are screened, but not 100% are inspected, are inspected. And so we all go through that and we're all screened and depending on where you're coming from or where you're leaving and you're in the Philippines, sometimes you're inspected three or four times. You almost, you almost have to take your clothes off, you know, and I, I didn't, I didn't know how dangerous water was until after 911, right? We can't dig water more. But again, there's a difference between, again, the clarification of the screening versus in, in inspections. But thank you very much for, for that and we'll check with, you know, again, in your, their clarification on the intent of the bill. We'll work with legal and whether or not this bill can continue with your clarification. And if, if, if not, if she says it, it is through a markup, we'll go ahead and do that. If not, we may have to recraft the bill?
Yeah. And sir, I would be more than open to having a second public hearing. I understand how important this is to the public. So after the markup, I'm more than open to having a second public hearing.
And we, and again, we will work with legal and see whether this bill can go through with the, the true intent of, of the author. And if, 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 if not, maybe we will require another public hearing, again, with the true intent of, of the bill. But with that being said, I want to thank everybody again. This now concludes the public hearing for Bill Number 108-38COR, of course, by Senator, authored by Senator William A. Parkinson and enacted at Section 104, 04.1 and to amend Section 104, 04 of Article 4, Chapter 10, Title 12, and relative to authorizing customs and quarantine agency to enter into a public-private partnership to screen all cargo entering Guam at the ports of entry. The committee will continue to accept written testimony within seven days from, from today, which may be addressed to myself. Senator Jesse Aluhan is chairman of the Committee on Transportation, Tourism, Customs, Utilities, Federal and Foreign Affairs or mail to the Calvo Areola Building Suite 101A, 259 Martyr Street, Hagatni Guam 96910, or you may also send testimonies to senator.luhan@guamlegislature.gov. This morning's, again, public hearing is now adjourned. The time is now 12:08 PM. Again, thank you very much, everyone, for, of course, the, the confirmation hearing and also for the public hearing in this bill. Thank you, senators. Thank you, gentlemen, and thank you for all testimony. This public hearing is adjourned.